The first item on the agenda is a public hearing, Local Law 1-2012, titled Vehicles and Traffic Part II: Stop Intersections. And it's in reference to installation of stop signs on Chief Chunk Road intersection with Owen Road. The first thing I'd like to do is say, basically, we had passed this local law back on September... September 10, 2012. But what we found was, is the communication we have with the local newspaper to put public notice of this somehow didn't get into the paper, and finding out why, that's another issue. But anyway, so, we did put a new article in the paper, and so here we are again. So would someone like to make a motion if we open a public hearing regarding this local law?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I think we have your letter that you wrote, and put that in the proceeding last time. You're certainly welcome to make a comment if you'd like. Since you're the only one here. On this particular issue?
I just appreciate that the last time it was passed, I know that was like a clerical error.
Right.
I'm happy that you guys are on top of it, because actually between the last time and today, there's been five more accidents.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's becoming a nuisance, and I'm just afraid that someone's going to wind up getting hurt.
Sure.
Or the worst-case scenario, death or fire.
Sure.
I think by slowing traffic down coming down the hill, well, I mean, it might happen, whether it be an accident, but I think it would be less, and I can go to work not wondering how many cars are in the front lawn, or how many times mailboxes have taken place.
Right.
Well, they really have to, they come to that stop spot, they really have to peel out to get that speed.
Either that or blow the stop sign totally at night. But on a rainy day, it's always a guarantee, I come home and there's skid marks into the rock wall, and the mailbox is down, and it's always, and then one time I came home, the utility pole was broken in half, and Owen River had the trucks in the driveway re-drilling another hole, so it was like...
Yeah, me and Rod would go by during...
Yeah, that was actually three times. Thursday, there was an accident in the rock wall, Friday they broke the utility pole, and Saturday afternoon when they put the garbage out, I didn't even know a car spun out between me and my neighbor, and there was a car hit a tree, and it was bad.
Well, I hope this works.
Yeah, me too.
At least it first steps.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know...
We'll see what happens.
If we stop the speed, I think, and at least if they stop, they'll see the sign of an oncoming turn, and they'll see the posted speed limit's 20 miles an hour. I think maybe they'll sink in that, wow, I should slow down.
Right.
Yeah.
Dennis, we don't have a copy of the resolution we had last time. Do we need that?
No, as long as you have before you the actual text of the local law, which I have in my block, maybe you don't.
I don't.
Legal notice? No, no, there should be an attached Secretary of State file. Here's like this.
Oh, yeah, I've got that, yes.
As long as you have that in front of you. A simple motion, move the adoption, well, close the public hearing.
Right.
Move the adoption.
Okay. Are any other comments? Would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So move. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, would someone move the, regarding this local law filing 1-2012?
The proper motion is to adopt local law set forth, Local Law Number 1 of 2012, set forth in the next Secretary of State notification.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion in that regard?
So move. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? What I'd like to say is, is that I agree with Lou. This may very well be the first step, we'll see what happens. And I'm glad we're moving in this direction. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we need a roll call vote on that one, Dennis?
I would prefer it, because it'll indicate that Councilman Cantorino being absent, that should be recorded.
Okay. Madam Clerk, we have a roll call vote, please.
Councilman Lyons.
Aye.
Councilman Capella.
Aye.
Councilman Newble.
Aye.
Supervisor Bloomfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Lou, how soon can you get those signed out?
Well, sure, Rod, we ordered them already.
So, as soon as they come in, they'll be put up.
Thank you, guys, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a good evening.
You too, thanks.
Okay, Dennis, you want to talk about this next one? The 30-day meat time for brass and liquor license.
Yeah. What the board presently has for them, is a resolution in regards to 30 days, based on its respect to a new liquor license application in Towne Ocean. And I believe also attached to it, perhaps not, is a copy of the actual notification notice form from the applicant to the Towne Ocean.
It is.
Okay, simply put, I call it the Mexican restaurant, La Neve's, La Mascarod, the former facility.
Owen Murphy's.
Owen Murphy's, right. The new owner is a corporation by the name of Valden Inc., and it's operating under a DVA of Policio, if I'm pronouncing that right, catering. And in order to obtain a liquor license in New York State, prior to the actual application being submitted to the SLA, you have to submit proof that you have notified the local community board, most times in major cities, or the municipality of where you're located, that you have in fact, or are in the process, or are going to, apply for a on-premises liquor license. And the mandatory requirement is 30 days. What's happened here is, the applicant, as I think the board's aware, has been trying to get that plate opened for two or three years, and I'm aware of. And apparently, somehow, some way, I express no opinion, this 30-day requirement, which could have been done, if you think about it, months ago, was not submitted. So now they're in attach 22, they're very close to obtaining all their permits, they want to get operating, et cetera, and the state basically takes the position, SLA, State Labor Authority, you can't even file with us until this 30-day period is over. So they require, I spoke to their representative, et cetera, and they requested that if there was any way possible, that the board, this board, could waive that 30-day requirement. So what you have in front of you is a simple resolution, which acknowledges that we've received the notification. We find them to be in order, and they've been before our boards for some time, both planning and building department, and it's suspected or expected that they'll be an asset to the community. And ergo, indicating we've received the notification, it's a request or an indication that we, the Towne Ocean, would waive the 30-day requirement, knowing full well they still have to comply with any number of other requirements, both building department, planning board, and state, which have nothing to do with us. That's the resolution.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion regarding this resolution?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Lyons.
Aye.
Councilman Capella.
Aye.
Councilman Newble.
Aye.
Supervisor Bloomfield.
Aye. Motion carries.
If I may, so, they intend to pick up a copy, a certified copy of the resolution tomorrow. So, whatever you have to do, you know, as deputy, because they needed to submit to the state, or the less state, I'll give you the time of day.
Thank you. And thank you for dealing with their attorney on this, Dennis.
Yeah, not a problem. Oh, I think, well, I think the board's aware, why it was done in the manner in which we did.
Yeah. The next item, lighten three, postpone, review, and approve a contract to the Ocean Mancerside to provide dog control services.
Did you hear any response to your recourse today?
No.
Okay. Status?
No. The, I've got a handshake, basically, based on what we agreed to about a month ago, and they just have not got it, and their attorney, the Humanside, has got to write this out, get us the proper...
Not defending him, but again, sometimes those contracts take time.
Whatever.
Yeah. The board's aware. With any attorney, so it's just that the board's aware.
He's special.
Now, he's a good attorney.
Okay, the next item is discuss and approve appointment of Paul H., or Paul F. Huppus to the Ocean Recreation Board. George, can you talk a little bit about this?
Yes, I can. Okay, first of all, Paul Huppus is the only person who has applied for this position, and the position has been open now for several months. This is the at-large position, so it has to be approved by the village, as well as the town. I was told by the representative from the village that they were approving him tonight at their meeting. And I'm bringing this forth, I mentioned it to you, I think, in our last meeting, but I'm bringing it forth now that Paul Huppus be approved for the at-large position for the JRC.
Good. Would someone like to make a motion in that regard?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'd just like to say that after being in track wreck myself, and I know Ken's been there, George has been there, and Phil's been there, it's a lot of work. It's a fun thing to do, and I'm grateful that he, that Paul wants to work with him, and I encourage him to jump in with both feet, you know, they can use the help. Okay, all, I guess on this one, yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Will you communicate that against someone? Okay, well, this next one's right up your alley, too, George, George Rack.
Yes. The situation with the approval, this is in conjunction with the demolition of the building installation. We got the bids back, the most one, I believe, was $386,000. We all came to the conclusion, and the village concurred, that we don't have the money to do that. So as a fallback position, what we were attempting to do now was to get a RFP for just the asbestos abatement. And we have two studies, the one from Quest is the most recent, and the most updated, and the better of the two. We are at stands now, it's Sean Hoffman, our engineer, is working with that organization, and I have not heard back from Sean as far as what he was, he was trying to get a sense of what they would have to do with that report in order to get it in order for the 2012 specs. So at this particular point, we're in the process of doing it, but we're not ready to authorize the engineers to go out and do an RFP for asbestos removal.
Now, do we need to act on the RFP that we already got by...
In 45 days, in 45 days, we will accept any and all bids.
Okay, so we can wait on that, then? Or do you want to do it today?
I don't know, I don't know what's, when did we open it?
Yeah, I think you're within a time period, I don't know what the dates are on it.
Oh, we definitely, 45 days has not passed.
Right.
So, you know, I don't think that there's really any chance that we're going to accept those bids, right? So, I don't know whether it's appropriate to...
Based on your conversation with the village, they thought it was too high, 2, 3, 4, 5.
Absolutely, yep. And they also concurred that we should go forth and get an RFP for the asbestos abatement, and again, that they would pay half.
Well, why don't we then pass a motion tonight to reject all of the bids?
I was gonna say, if that's...
In deference to the people who go with the bidding.
Yep.
Would someone like to make a motion in that regard?
So move. Second.
Any discussion?
Just before you vote, the resolution should reflect that you can reject any and all bids, I assume, on the basis that the price is too high. I think you have to disclose that, but it might be helpful in the second round or third round, whatever comes.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Not only was it too high, but we couldn't even quantify exactly that the $386,000 was going to be enough.
Yeah.
Because they had the caveat in there, depending on how much asbestos they found, they may have put in a change order.
Yeah.
And it was looking that it was going to be a significant amount more than the $386,000. And so that's really...
Because those projects, change orders are a given, just absolute given.
Right. So we, I mean, I heard somewhere upward of around the half million dollars was going to be, when all was said and done, so we certainly can't do that, but I'll take it as per your station.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Councilman Lyons.
Aye.
Councilman Capella.
Aye.
Councilman Newble.
Aye.
Supervisor Bloomfield.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Ray. And you're going to communicate that with the village, Dennis, with George?
Yes. And Sean.
Right, and Sean.
You know, just as an aside, having been involved in things of that nature, Sean is aware, so you can actually, in your RFP, bid it on the basis that, look, the price will not allow any cost adjustments later. Because this is not like you're going to hit an unknown quantity, rock in the ground. You know you've got asbestos there, and if it means they're going to remove it at $10 an hour or $5 an hour, that's their own due diligence, in terms of inspecting the building, et cetera. You follow what I'm saying?
But it was not in the era.
Yeah, I'm just saying, for future, I assume, yeah.
Well, this one, I think what we're going to do is, what's it going to cost for the bids to remove the asbestos, and see what that might sell.
Yeah, let them do their due diligence.
Once it's out of there, then we have decision-making what to do with buildings.
But you've also got to severely limit their opportunity to claim an adjustment or unforeseen factor in the RFP.
Right.
Don't you, just the fact they had that there?
Oh, so, that's why unfortunately, government, federal, especially, you just...
Well, you know what, we write this RFP, maybe if you were to look at it before, if it comes to the board, to...
Not a problem, whoever's dealing, is it you, George? Yeah, whoever, if you're dealing with Sean, I'm sure they're well-versed in it, and it's going to be tight as hell in that regard.
Okay, thank you. The next item is, Meredith Monte is our part-time court clerk, is resigning effective November 2, 2012. She's taking a full-time job with Center for Discovery up in Sullivan County. My understanding, she has a degree in psychology and something else that lends itself to that type of work, so she's very excited about full-time employment, in particular, that place of employment. So, we've got the letter here to Judge Seon and Judge Van Haster, addressed to them regarding this resignation. So would someone like to make a motion, we accept this resignation?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? I think we certainly ought to have the judges request them to write a letter of thanks and appreciation for her work. She's really a marvelous young lady, and she's done a great job since she's passed on. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Dennis, you want to talk about this next one, because I guess it's not quite ready to...
Actually, the Woodland Estates one is ready.
Well, I was talking about the one, we're going to get to that next.
Cannon Hill.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Cannon Hill, that is, to my knowledge, not complete yet. I talked to Supervisor about it, and I guess all of our departments have signed off on it, including the building inspector. But we need documentation, including, and most of you in Ohio's are a bit involved in closing, including a policy of title insurance guaranteed to us that the land, by which the road was built, is free, clear of any liens, judgments, et cetera, you know, it's a fee policy. So there are documents which they must supply to us, and in fairness, as I told Supervisor, I don't know who their rep is, I don't know where those documents are, it's even possible they could have been submitted to our planning insurance, but I've got to run that down. And to date, I don't have any of this.
Well, anyway, I mean, the highway superintendent's signed off.
Correct.
Neil's signed off, the planning board has signed off. And so it's in your packet, what we will be agreeing to.
Right.
I'm going to put it against the Thursday night, in case the information does come in.
Yeah, I would. And just so, it's no different than any other preparation document on their part. We're ready, they're just going to give us the permit.
And I will, then, Neil, do his magic tomorrow, find out what we're...
Yeah, I'm going to get a call deal. I saw him today, but I forgot to mention it.
Okay.
For that exact reason.
Okay, the next item is, well, tax settlement search year, tax search year with Woodland State. You want to go through that one, Dennis?
Yeah, this one was before the board previously. I think, I know our committee, if you will, comprised of Supervisor Bloomfield and Councilman Cantorino, had agreed on this disposition, had been recommended to this board. We discussed it, I think, a number of times in executive session or whatnot. Now it's formally on for approval based upon the submission to us of the proper stipulation material or document which you see there. In fact, if you look at it, it's already, it's evidence it's been signed by the petitioner's attorney and the school district attorney, as being accurate, page three. And basically what it does, this resolves the tax search area for four separate years in regards to the Woodland Estates LLC project, which is located on...
Houston Road.
Houston Road, I don't remember the name of the road. It consists of 24 lots, on which there exist three or four houses. Not on the 24 lots, but on individual lots of that 24. The rest are vacant land. And it was determined based upon previous discussions and recommendations that the reductions as set forth in that attached schedule, which you do have, is recommended, that's attached to the actual stipulation. In case you want to take a look and see what kind of reductions are being given on some of these lots.
They're significant.
Yes, many of them are. And what it is, if you notice, the reduction, it's off the assessed valuation, okay, as opposed to the fair market value, but they can be converted also. But the unfortunate thing is, just the philosophy and theory of assessments, we had lots out there which are single, non-further divisible, and not permitted, lots, which were assessed, and if you will, taxed at fair market values of over $600,000. And to my knowledge, regardless of the size of the parcel, unless you consider it a farm, there are no lots that presently in Towne Ocean worth $600,000 on a fair market basis. Unfortunately, somehow, these got into the system at these levels. There was a lot of dialogue over the years, but with no satisfaction, I think solid stems of the personalities involved. The surrounding projects, including those of Beamy, which are across the road, are considerably higher, I apologize, considerably lower. And these reductions are based upon that analysis, other vacant land analysis in the town, and an adjustment which has been approved, if you will, informally, even by the assessor. She recognized that they were what I call erroneous, and they had to be adjusted. And this is the level to which we took them, and everyone was satisfied with them, from the committee. I don't know if the board was, in its entirety, because you fellows may not have been aware of it, specifically in regards to lots. But the school district felt that it was very fair, and I hesitate to make any further comments only because the camera's on, and I don't want to get personal, vis a vis the representative of the petitioner, and typical tweet.
I don't know if I was in a film, because I know film.
You know, well, one of the, you know, this is one of those cases, also, where we're talking 9, 10, 11, 12. And with the plummet in December of 2008, and left this thing. So what we see here today is being maybe kind of unreasonable, price-wise. If you go back to 2008, they were demanding a lot more money in those days than they are today.
Yeah, very possible. And it was a perfect storm, as you all know, in 2008, and these unfortunately came off the subdivision approval line, if you want to call it, at that time. And again, and you can understand how it came about, property was hot up until then. It was a nice project, et cetera, et cetera, but if you go out there, I think Doug is familiar, I think there are four houses.
Four houses?
Full.
No, three are full, and one is...
Right, yeah, but by me, as far as even starting, they're starting to push it now, they clean the property up, because I guess they're going to try and make a push maybe next spring. But they just hit the wall, and I think it was personality and confusion resulted in the subsequent three years, where it should have been resolved sooner, it just wasn't.
Right.
And unfortunately, that results in these accumulation of substantial potential refunds or not.
I have a question.
Yep.
But I'm looking at the schedule here.
Yeah.
I mean, this is going to get approved, but there is some that are way up there, like the 2 something to $300,000, they got adjusted to $51,000 to $60,000, let's say. But then you have the some that are the $100,000 or $80,000, and they got adjusted almost to the same thing. There must have been a difference of the properties.
There is.
There is, it's rolling hills, if you know where we're talking about. It's behind, if you will, Maraski's Farm.
Some are very, very large.
I know where they are. Some of them are very large.
Very large, maybe they're 18-acre lot.
No, the reason, I mentioned this question, is that they're so close, if there was a difference before because of the size, now they came really...
Yeah, what we did, just on the board understanding the methodology, what we did was, we took the gross numbers. I mean, we were working off assessments in excess of $4 million. The infrastructure's in, but there's no, few houses. And so what we did was, we worked off that, with again, with participation of the school district, then an appraiser, and we then laid, if you will, the allocation across the lots. That's why, we didn't do it single lot by single lot by single lot. That's why there's a bit of aberration when you look at it, look, that perhaps the lowest assessment should have been $67,000, and it should have been across 20 lots. It didn't work out that way in terms of the allocation. Plus, and not on complication, but there are also lots which this petitioner failed to file on. Meaning, if you notice, in the caption, we actually recite all 24 lots. Reason we do that is because at certain years, he forgot to file for lot 4, 9, and 13, for instance. Meaning, it was a somewhat disconcerting, sloppy litigation, and in order to decipher that, we had to do it in this particular manner.
Well, maybe that's my question here, because just as an example, lot number three is an assessment where there's a reduction in 0, 9, and 10.
But not in 11.
But not in 11 and 12, is that because he failed to...
He did, that's exactly what happened. If they didn't file, they're not entitled to. You know, no, obviously, the town could voluntarily give it to them, but we're not in that business.
You picked up on it, you're right.
Yeah, and then I had one other question, which was on page two of the step.
Yeah.
It says here...
Which paragraph was it?
Number seven.
Seven?
Number seven, it says, Towne Ocean, Ocean, that a check has to be made payable to the order of Burton Dorpen within 30 days.
That's the county.
No, but it says Towne Ocean.
That should not be.
Yeah, well, the thing, the fact is, is Ocean doesn't cut checks.
Right. Well, so then it should have been changed?
It could, it's a legal impossibility, but yeah, I can strike that, it's an issue. I'm looking for the 30 days. It's usually 60.
It is 60 days, and item eight.
Oh, and item eight, yes. And again, and this is not to disparage anybody, but one of the problems was getting this right. There were a lot of typos and...
Yeah, I knew we didn't write checks, but I wanted to make sure that this wasn't...
Yeah, no, what I'll do, yeah, no, what I'm, no problem, what I would do is, I'll strike that reference to the town, just so there is no confusion.
Okay. That's a good pickup there.
Yeah, it's a legal impossibility, but nevertheless, yeah, it must be consistent.
Okay. And then if I, just my own indication of the legal term, on the last page, it says, the stipulation may be filed in counterparts.
Right, what that means, what that means is simply that, for instance, I do not sign this actual one, which you have before you with the two signatures, so there'll be three signatures. I can sign a separate distinct blank one, my signature on that, together with these two, would constitute a full submitted stipulation. It's just, you know, many times, you never get the same original traveling around, you get to different offices.
Now, should we have a corrected copy of this for Thursday night, versus trying to do it tonight by scratching out Towne Ocean?
Yeah, I have no problem with that, because much like the other resolution, I was told that they're going to stop by tomorrow to pick it up, with the reason they want to file and get the 60-day time period.
Well, why don't you tell us what we ought to be doing in that one, in that regard? Because we can do it Thursday night, or we can do it...
I have no problem either way, if you're comfortable.
Oh, let's do it tonight, then.
Yeah, yeah, I would recommend, because I want to be taking care of it. You know, I've just done it on this particular...
Would someone like to make a motion regarding this resolution?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
And just discussion-wise, I know if Phil were here, he wouldn't be pleased by this, but as you know, we discussed this, with the school district, the school district participated, the school district recommended this. Their council has been upset with me, we haven't finalized it. I'm like, what do you want from me?
And then with the, with the stipulation at number seven, it's Towne Ocean's...
Scratch that.
Done.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Lyons.
Aye.
Councilman Capella.
Aye.
Councilman Newble.
Aye.
Supervisor Bloomfield.
Aye. Motion carries. Resolution's passed. Thank you.
Does anyone have anything for the, they want to talk about this on the agenda?
I apologize, can I have the move it in a second on that?
I was the second. I moved.
I'll move it.
All right, would someone like to make a motion, then we go in executive session with the intent not to return, to discuss the status of the altere litigation, the status of the MTVE litigation, discuss proposed KRG tax search area settlement, discuss development of potential contract change in regard to medical and liability insurance policy. And I'd just kind of like to give you a little update on the 2013 Towne Ocean budget. All in? So, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Means adjourned. Thank you.